Good afternoon. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Members of City Council, please attend the call meeting of the City Council to be held in City Council Chamber, 801 Crawford Street, 6:00 PM, Monday, May 11, 2015, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Members of council, if you would indicate your presence electronically. Seven members of City Council are present. Members of council, this evening you have a Historic Preservation Commission's Appeal, and it is for the property located at 647 Mount Vernon Avenue. We will first hear from a commission member. They will speak for five minutes. The applicant will speak for five, and then council can deliberate.
Okay.
So if Mr. Liffey would please come forward, he's representing the HPC.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, ladies and gentlemen, my name is John Liffey. I reside at 229 Mount Vernon Avenue, am a member of the Historic Preservation Commission, and just for full disclosure, I do own a home with a slate roof. So that's just to let you know that. We're here tonight for the appeal by Mr. Robert Good concerning the duplex at 647 Mount Vernon Avenue in Port Norfolk. On January 20th, an application was submitted for the removal of the existing slate roof with the installation of asphalt shingles and its replacement. The application was denied by HPC. The Port Norfolk Historic Guidelines, which y'all are all familiar with from the last time, allow for in-kind replacement. In-kind is slate or synthetic slate. Based on that, we denied the application. We did offer the replacement with synthetic slate. The applicant chose to appeal, then denial. HPC, we're very consistent with our deliberations. We follow these guidelines. We know that if we deviate from those guidelines and say yes just once, we've set a precedent and we can't say no again. So we have to follow our guidelines. Recently, the city commissioned a local architectural firm to analyze our guidelines concerning our slate roofs in our city. The analysis agreed with what we have been doing, and they agreed that we take a middle-of-the-road approach amongst all the neighboring cities. In 2014 and 2013, we reviewed 136 applications. Only five have come before you. So we have a good track record with resolving all of our applicants. In some cases, obviously, in five, we don't. We heard the word "logical" used in the last couple of appeals. I lived in a historic home for 18 years. There's nothing logical about a historic home. Nothing. And nothing logical about our historic guidelines. If you want logical, go to Shea Terrace or somewhere that's not historic and buy an ice brick ranch. Because logical just doesn't apply to historic homes. We have these guidelines that we have to follow. These guidelines are there for a reason, to protect our five historic districts. We have slate in three of them. We're not asking council to rubber stamp our approvals or our disapprovals. That's the whole purpose of the appeal process. What we are asking you to do is to protect our historic districts, enforce the guidelines. They were established by our city, and they're there for a reason. It makes no sense to purchase a home in a historic district and then chip away at the very reason you bought the home and the rules and the guidelines that make it a historic home. So we ask you to uphold this ruling by HPC. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, sir. No, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Liffey.
Thank you.
Mr. Good, you can come forward. If you'll state your name just for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Robert Good. I'd like to thank the mayor and the vice mayor and the council members for giving me this time this evening to talk about the replacement or the appeal of my replacement to the slate roof at 647 Mount Vernon Avenue. It does have a slate roof. I had asked the Historic Commission to allow me to replace it. We've tried numerous repairs on it, and it's really at the end of its useful life. None of the contractors that we hire are willing to warranty any of their work because the more they stand on it, move around it, the more shifting and damage they can do. So there's no warranty. We have repaired it numerous times. When I went before the Historic Committee, I asked about using a product called GAF Slate Line. It's a look-alike. It's indiscernible from slate from the city street views. The letter I -- they did deny the request, and when I got a letter back from them, the reason that they denied it was because I had asked to use architectural-grade shingles. Here's their letter, if I can. The request that I made was not to use architectural-grade shingles. This is what architectural shingles look like from that very report that my predecessor had just talked about. And in a minute, I'm going to show you what I would like to use, and I think you'll see that it's completely different than architectural-grade shingles. Now, in reviewing the guidelines from the Historic Committee, on page 40, they do say that a number of substitute roof materials may be approved for use in Port Norfolk. These materials may include metal, artificial slate, architectural, and asphalt shingles. Here's a copy of those pages indicating in the guidelines what can be used. Now, you'll note on page 41, they have a side-by-side comparison. And although that side-by-side comparison is a little blurry, they do concede that the visual appearance does look like slate in color and texture. What I had asked to use was a product called GAF Slate Line. It's an asphalt shingle. It's a premium-grade shingle, and it's designed to look exactly like slate. On the top of this project piece is my house, and there's a close-up of the slate shingles that are there. And below is a picture of two houses located in the city of Norfolk. One has real slate, the other has this GAF Slate Line product. If I hadn't identified them in the picture, it would be very hard for you to identify which is which. This product looks like, feels like, has the color of, and in every way from any city view, will look like slate. This is actually the product itself, and I had asked to use the antique slate color, which would in every way look like the product that I have now. I'm trying to give everybody a chance to catch up. I'm just waiting for everybody to get caught up. My -- in closing, I just wanted to ask, and again, thank you for the time, but again, my feeling is that this GAF Slate Line product, it's a premium-grade product, it's going to be indiscernible from any slate that might be out there now. And again, I ask for your consideration in this. Do you have any questions that you'd like to ask me about the products, the pictures?
Yes, ma'am.
Which one of these houses is the wheel, and which one is the --
Frankly, I can't. The one -- there's a little identifier down on the bottom to tell you which is which.
Well, it says 714 Murray Avenue is the Slate Line, and 712 is the --
Oh, it doesn't tell you which is which?
It doesn't tell me which is which.
The one on the left.
I mean, the good news is I can't tell the difference in the picture.
Yeah, I understand. I understand. The one on the left is the slate look-alike. That is the actual GAF Slate Line product that Mr. Meeks is holding.
That is that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Dr. Evans?
Yes, I just wanted to ask. You took this back and showed it to them?
Yeah. These same pictures?
Yes.
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay. And they commented how?
Let me defer to you, because I'm not sure. There was lots of comments that night.
The comment was, based on our guidelines, slate has to be slate. And this is the slate.
Our comment was, based on guidelines, you replace in-kind, which means slate or synthetic slate. And that was the reason.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, I have a question for the Commissioner. The recommendation is based on the product being architectural shingle. Are you saying that the GAF product is not a synthetic slate product?
That's exactly what we're saying, yes, sir.
And what's the basis for that?
It's an asphalt-based shingle. It's not an replacement for slate. An approved replacement for slate. It's not in our guidelines.
I'd like to say that in their guidelines, it does say that replacement with a substitute can be of metal, artificial slate, architectural shingles, or asphalt. That's on page 92 of the guidelines in the matrix. It has to be reviewed and approved by the committee. There's no specific analysis of any kind of product, whether it be asphalt, slate, plastic, or anything else, in the guidelines. It's very subjective whether or not a product looks like, feels like slate from the street. In my opinion, this GAF Slate Line, which is a premium-grade product, is indiscernible. Indiscernible. Whether it be made of slate or asphalt, both slate and asphalt are both natural products. Some of the products, I believe that the committee has approved in the past that should have been synthetic, are actually man-made plastic products, and they're very environmentally unfriendly.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. It appears to me the Historic Preservation Commission did exactly what they must do by the guidelines. If this product, although to me, who has no background in building at all, I can't tell the difference in the photo, it looks like slate, but it's not true synthetic slate. It is made of asphalt, and the commission did what they must. That's what your rules say. I absolutely understand and would uphold that the commission did what they must do by their own regulations that were approved by this body some years ago.
May I say one thing? When you say --
Let me finish.
Yes.
However, I can't tell the difference. I don't think anybody can tell the difference from the sidewalk. This City Council has made a precedent several weeks ago in a similar situation, and I'm going to make a motion that we approve your appeal. Is that right, Madam Clerk? Is that the right way to say it?
Second.
Yes, sir. Counsel, we have a motion and a second to approve the appeal. That's before you. You'll be voting electronically. This appeal is approved 7-0. Ladies and gentlemen, the members of council will now move to the sixth floor conference room.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you?
Yes, sir. Members of council, you are now in your budget discussion. Well, Vernon had a brief.
No, we want to get the judge in and out. I invited him to come in and just -- there's been a lot of conversation about the budget and some of the things that the judge over there wanted and requested versus what we are and not doing, and I just thought we'd at least have the chief judge come and speak before the full entire council to make sure that we're all on the same page, because it's not fair to be saying we did something because the judges requested or did not request it without at least having the judge say so. So Judge Morrison, thank you for your willingness to come over and speak to the entire council. As you know, we've spent a great deal of money with this new courthouse and a lot of technology and a lot of other things that we're looking in way of cost-cutting measures because of the budget constraints over the next, well, this year and going forward. And so with that, is there any latitude or conversation or discussion that you guys would like to add to what we're doing? I know we had a consultant that come through a few years back, and I think he spoke with the judges as well as other folks before he presented back to council that actually articulated some of those cutbacks. And so with that, I'll yield the floor to you, sir. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, management team, concerned citizens. Good evening.
Good evening.
I guess a lot of y'all are wondering why is Judge Morrison here? That's the last thing that a judge wants to do is get involved in politics, because number one, we're not supposed to do it. And number two, it's just not fitting in proper. Reason being, a lot of things come before us, especially at the circuit court level. And if we get involved in any part, it may say, well, this judge said A, B, or C. That judge said A, B, or C. And then we find ourselves taking the appropriate act, which is to accuse ourselves and requesting that the Supreme Court appoint another judge that should be impartial. Now, I do have some concerns, both as a judge and both as someone who lives in this city and loves this city. And I'm going to take off my hat and my robe as a judge now. I was asked to attend a meeting that I think you were directed to have with the sheriff last week, along with management team, and get with the judges. And I said it because I don't come to council meetings. I don't come to the work sessions. I don't think it's proper for me to be here as a judge. But I do look at TV, and I do look at every work session that we have and every council meeting. And a lot of times, people say things about the judiciary, and they say things about the judges, be it right or wrong, a lot of times it's wrong. But we, as judge and I, have impressed upon my judges. And I say my judges because I am the chief judge. We rotate every two years. And notwithstanding how they may feel and how they may want to respond, we need to stay out of it. And having stated that, and based on y'all's concerns, some of y'all's concerns, on one side or the other, some council members on one side, some council members on another side, and based on certain statements that were stated, and certain concerns I think that the people that live in Portsmouth have, I feel that I didn't go to the last one because I took the position, not knowing what may happen, and especially in light of the fact that there was a school of thought that it should be open to the press, what have you. I took the position that, and I did call you and tell you I would not be in attendance. However, if council members wanted to hear from the judges, then I would come before the whole council at the work session, where all the council members would be present, the media would be present, and all concerned citizens would be present. And I did, and my other judges agree with this, the other circuit judges, and I pressed upon them that we need to do this because we live in Portsmouth, too. I'm talking about judges. And it doesn't sit well with us to look at television, and there's something about Portsmouth that's not in a positive sense. We look at the newspaper, there's something in the paper about Portsmouth that may not be in the positive light. We know that y'all have a job with respect, which is the budget. And it's one thing that it doesn't stop in Portsmouth. The same problem that Portsmouth has happened, not only with its budget, but also with respect to the different personalities on council, the different dynamics of management. You can find them in all the cities of Portsmouth. You can find them throughout the whole Commonwealth, throughout the whole nation. And go all the way up to Washington, DC, and look at Congress. Well, I got a call from Sheriff Watson, and he called me, he tried to make contact with me with his office, my secretary of private. I had already left. My niece graduated from Norfolk State with her masters in criminal justice Saturday, and my sister flew in from Indianapolis. So I've been trying to accommodate all of them in the family. But I did convey the message to Sheriff Watson that I suppose being in Roanoke today, should have gotten in Roanoke about 12 o'clock, because I have two very important meetings. We have a mandatory judicial conference, where all of the judges in court of record, which will be your circuit court judges, your court of appeal, and the state Supreme Court judges, active and retired. It's mandatory that we report to Roanoke, and we have this judicial training session that will last until Thursday. Well, I told the sheriff, and I had promised you, Mr. Mayor, that, and I felt strong about it, I said, well, I sent an email to the Supreme Court and advised them that I cannot be there today. And hopefully that I can get out in time, because I do have a meeting with the chief justice, who will be meeting all of the chief judges of all of the circuits. So when I leave here tonight, I get on the road and try to get to Roanoke before midnight. If not, then I -- my wife is telling me, y'all shouldn't leave too late on the road by myself, because I'm not as young as I used to be. Well, I told her, I said, well, insurance is paid, so you'll be happy, one way or the other. But I may leave early in the morning. Getting back to, I apologize for digress, but getting back to why I'm here. I met with the sheriff, and I told the sheriff, I said, well, sheriff, you have my cell phone. We can communicate by phone. He indicated we can do a conference call, and I said, well, we'd do better than that. I said, I will meet you Monday at 11 o'clock. Now, I come into the office, and I'll meet you Monday at 11 o'clock. I got there, there was a little break in communication, not on his part, but I was supposed to wait on a call from his office at 10 o'clock confirming that we can meet at 11. I never got the call. I said, well, let me get on down to the office anyway. It may be a breakdown in communication, and he was already there. He was on time. And once he evaluated what had happened, I said, well, it's not a breakdown on your part, I'll take the blame. I said, but I didn't know, so I came in anyway. And he and I had a long meeting. We had a very, very intense meeting. And it got to the point, and I'm going to say this, it got to the point that I told Sheriff Watson, I said, Sheriff Watson, notwithstanding any of the differences that you and I may have had, or anybody else that may have had with you, I know that you love Portsmouth. I know that for a fact. Now, some of y'all read the newspaper, know that, and I've had differences on one time or another, but I don't take things personal, so, and I didn't even bring it up to him. But he and I talked, and I said, Sheriff, I know you like this city. And I said, it's time for people to come together and compromise, make a decision. It's time for us to do what's best for the city. And he's very passionate about court security, very passionate about his jail, very passionate about his employees. And I said, Sheriff, I'm going to take my hat off as a judge, and I'm going to speak to you as a friend. And I tell the mayor the same thing. It's not the mayor's office that offers belonging to the people, and it's not your jail that jail belongs to the city of Portsmouth. I said, now, not getting in the middle of anything, I said, you and the mayor need to sit down and try to come up with a compromise, because it's not looking right. I said, everybody's making a sacrifice. I said, our numbers are down. We made a sacrifice to the state. We lost a judge. I'm a fraternity, lost at least three to five prosecutors, and maybe some more support staff. Craig Stock was lost, support staff. And you're concerned about the security and this complex. Now, I said, so I know you love this city, and you didn't meet last Thursday, and you told me why you did not meet, and I can understand that. I said, well, let's get over that. I said, let's sit down, you and I, and talk as friends and friends, because there's one thing that not only you and I have in common, but I think that everybody on this council have in common. We all want to do what's best for the city. And when we have a fiscal crisis, whatever you want to call it, it's nothing unique and different than any other city throughout this Commonwealth and throughout this country. I said, so let's get to that issue. And he paused, and I paused, and we looked each other in the eye, and he said, Judge, you're right, I do love this city, and I love my deputies, and I love everybody in this city. I said, so what can we do? So he and I went down, took a lot of time, and started talking about the deputies, and how many we actually need for security. And what we ended up agreeing to, and I told him he has no problem dealing with the judges, the circuit court judges, who are the ones that are responsible for coming up with what we need in that building. But we built that complex, the city management, and even members on this council who were on this council when we built this complex. And when we not only built but and broke ground, but when it was designed, I think Councilwoman, Vice Mayor was on the committee, when we selected the architect, and then went to another architect. But what we did during the design, we had monthly meetings of all the stakeholders, that meaning the sheriff's office, who's probably the most important stakeholder, because he has to provide security. That means the Commonwealth fraternity, members of the bar, all of the judges, the clerk's office, the clerk in general district court, the clerk in juvenile investigation district court, everybody who's a stakeholder. And every meeting we had with the architect in designing this complex, made sure that everybody was on board. And the reason why we did it this way, because a lot of times, when you do a major project of this nature, and before we even got, went through the process of selecting the architect, Judge Davis, Mark Davidson and I attended a conference, a national conference, that talked about courthouse renovations and construction. And the main driving force was to try to have everything, have everybody on board when you're planning, because once you break ground and start making these changes, then it's going to cost money every time you make a change. I think those who are in business know that. So we had everybody on board. And it's one thing that the city did with this complex, they made sure it was properly equipped, with the bells and whistles with respect to equipment. That's why the sheriff would verify this. Everything that goes on in the courtroom is monitored. There's a station in that complex with cameras and everything and equipment, that he has somebody manned in that station, that they can look and see in every courtroom, every court and everything. We have video, things of that nature. Now, what the sheriff has agreed to, and after he and I talked, and after I alleviated the fears that he may have with respect to security, and the judges taking action against him, I finally told him, I said, Sheriff, I don't care what judge it is. You're only obligated to provide what you're mandated by statute and what you're mandated by the comp board. I said, now, a circuit court judge would love to have three deputies, especially with respect to criminal case, but we never ask for, because he's only mandated to give us two. The time when we were in the old complex, he's only mandated with respect to district court and juvenile court, for each courtroom is one deputy. And that's what's in the old complex, when we didn't have cameras, when the halls were probably no wider than twice this width. And we're walking side by side with those who have been charged with the murder, capital murder, rape, rob, and everything. But with the equipment that we have, and also in the old complex, and Sheriff and I talked about the old complex and the scanners, and the new complex, after talking about everything, and the sheriff is really serious about this, I said, Sheriff, we need a compromise. I said, you don't have to worry about the judges trying to take any action against you, because if you can come up with a figure that can play a role in helping the city deal with this budget, then you're not going to have any problem with the judges. So we looked at those 23 deputies, and he looked at me, and he said, well, I appreciate what you're saying, you're right. And I said, this is -- And I said, this is bigger than you, this is bigger than the mayor, this is bigger than anybody else on council, anybody in management, it's bigger than the judges. Everybody need to come together and do what is best for the city. And he thought about it, and I said, let's be realists about it, and I said, you have a heart, you know what's best, so let me know what we can do and see what we can agree on. And we came up with a figure, he is willing, because he didn't know whether or not he should be here, and I said, Sheriff, you should be here. I said, you should be here so you can tell the council members and let the citizen know that this is your word, that this is your word. He is willing, and the judges, I'm speaking on behalf of the judges, we have agreed that he can relinquish 16 positions. And I think that will put a big dent in the problem that y'all may have, be having. Not one deputy, but 16 deputies out of those 23, and we'll be able to provide security, good security. Sheriff, you're here, and that's your time to talk, and then if they have any questions. Sheriff?
Please, Sheriff.
Come on up here, stand next to me, please, sir.
I think you got the kiddie chair.
You can lift it up right here.
Don't you have a gun though? I'll just, you're all right. Judge, thanks for meeting me this afternoon. Mayor, what we did, I sat down with Judge Morrison today, and we were trying to figure out how we could save the city some money, and at the same time, put enough security in the courthouse to get by. I wanted to find out what the judges were comfortable with, which we're slicing to the bone, there's no doubt about it, and we agreed that we could do away with 16 deputies' positions, we could keep the scanners and the supplements, and I'd be willing to do that.
Mr. Meeks?
Do you have a dollar amount, what does 16 represent?
This could be somewhere between, I would say, about $800,000, $850,000, maybe, $900,000. I'll have to go back and see which each one's making. It's in the ballpark, between somewhere between there and $900,000, I would think. Now, Mr. Mayor, if you all have any questions, then, might want to get on the road, but I think there may be another concern that, and this is to allow, lay the fears of anybody on council. It takes a lot when the court has to use the judiciary to get attention, to get what they think it deserves or needs, the citizens need. And we don't do this lightly. In the past, the sheriff and I had our differences, and we had to work them out one way or the other. But when it comes down to security, that's always between the sheriff and the judges. And no member on council should have the fear the city of Portsmouth judiciary trying to suit them because of security.
Any other questions for the judge or Dr. Atmans?
Not for the judge.
Okay, do we have anything for the judge, and then we can ask the judge to go ahead and get on the road, and then we can get to, okay, yes, ma'am.
I just want to say thank you to both of you for manning up and having the conversation and coming to a compromise.
It's easy to talk to.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Judge.
And I would say, I did not convey our conversation with anybody. I know every member on council, but I did not call any council member, because he kept his word and I kept my word. And I told him, if he shows up, I'll make sure I tell counsel what he's agreed to do, I want it to come from him, that this is what he's agreed with respect to these charges. And as a matter of fact, Bishop Evans is my spiritual leader, I belong to St. Mark. I didn't call him, I didn't call, I didn't call my friend, the mayor, didn't call, well, all of y'all are my friends, but I didn't call my friend, Councilor Cherry, my friend, Councilman Moody, and my friend, Vice Mayor, my friend, Danny Meeks. And if you have any more questions, I'm gonna try to get on the road.
Thank you, Judge, for stopping by very much. Appreciate that.
All rise. I guess it's happy, Judge.
Thank you.
Let us, we want to switch gears real quick and get to this one piece here with the seawall, and then when we get into budget, I want to stay in the budget. So Sheriff, if you would take a seat back out here for a minute, and then we'll get into all of this discussion.
I get a question.
I had a 7:00 meeting. I have Colonel Jamoki and my fiscal affairs officer, but I have another commitment. I thought we were going to be out of here sooner than this. Like I say, would you be willing to discuss it with my undersheriff while I go to this other meeting, and I've already promised to be.
I'd rather have you in here, sir.
We can do the seawall thing in the end.
All right, well, if we want to get in, all right. Mr. Moody, you got a question for Sheriff?
Yeah, so on the cutbacks, step us through how that's gonna work. Will they be eligible for unemployment?
Of course they will. It's a layoff, isn't it, not being terminated, they're being laid off.
How will you do that, seniority or?
You know, they're all city positions, and what I'm probably gonna do is probably go with the highest paid. We save the city more money by going with the highest paid. And the peons will probably be safer than higher paid deputies would be.
Sheriff, my question is, and I have here the state compensation list that authorizes the positions that you authorize to be able to operate the jail, the courthouse security, as well as your other civil processing. And the Commonwealth here authorizes you 23 positions for court security. And my concern all along has been, if you're getting paid by the state to have 23 deputies to secure the courthouse, why on earth did you need anybody from the city?
Because they, those positions are civil process, your honor, they fall under the courthouse security.
And so, and one of the things that we wanted to get with, because there are a lot of things that you do that bring great benefit to this city.
I hope to.
And most people recognize that, but if we're not able to communicate, and you're not able to allow us to look at your organization and see how you're structured and where people are, we'll never get an appreciation of what your needs are and what the city needs are. And you saying that 'cause you said it means we need to do it, is not our job to be able to accept that type of communication. And so, no one here knows how you're structured and where people are. All we have is a state comp board that says you're authorized to have 161 positions. And to come to the city and to have us do these things when we're in a pinch, and not to be able to justify those, I thought was very unprofessional.
Well, anytime y'all want to come over, come over. But just don't come walking through the courthouse and figure this is this and this. You don't see what's behind the scenes, you don't know where lockup 3 is, you don't know where the TV room's at, you don't know anything about it, you don't see that stuff, it's all hidden. And we've got to man each one of these posts that the public does not see. We've got 300-some cameras in that courthouse.
But we are the appropriators for the local dollars, and the $7.5 million are being appropriated by this council. And certainly you ought to be able to give this council an organizational chart with the functions of where all of your folks are, and so we can get a better appreciation of where your folks are and the services that you're providing, and the other things that you're doing that saves the city money. If we want to magnify that, then we have the right to say, hey, we'd like to give you more money to do more of these things. You can't get that kind of relationship with this council if we don't know where your organization is and where it stands.
I agree, but like I say, on paper is one thing, seeing it firsthand is another. You're welcome, any of y'all are welcome to come by anytime you want to see anything we have.
All right, any other questions for Sheriff?
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, Your Honor, I appreciate it.
Enjoy your meeting, thank you for coming. All right.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, we want to get James out of here with the sound wall real quick.
Sure. This is about the seawall, and, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, I sent to you late Friday by email a notice that we were going to close a portion of the seawall over the weekend as a result of our recent finding of deficiency in the structure, and in anticipation of, you know, a coming storm, of which we didn't know what, how severe it was and how it might impact the seawall. So we closed it for the weekend, and we also knew on Friday, we were gonna meet today with our structural engineer about the condition and what's next for us. And so, we've done that now, and so I just asked our city engineer, James Wright, to brief you on where we are with it.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. As you saw in the email, we're currently underwater in the section of seawall. We were notified late afternoon Friday by divers that there were some deformities in some of the batter piles in the section adjacent to Admiral's Landing and the Renaissance. Upon getting that information, what we did, you and I went down with crews, and we cordoned off that section of seawall and scheduled a meeting for first thing Monday morning so we can get some additional information. What we found from that meeting is that to the area that failed back in 2009, there are batter piles heading towards the north, but additionally batter piles that headed toward the south that show similar deformations and deflections and material loss that happened in that incident back in 2009. So after that meeting, we actually extended that closure down, so the entire seawall from Renaissance all the way down is closed. By the end of the day on Fri, this coming Friday, we should have an idea of what the extent of that damage is in those batter pile areas. What's most likely gonna happen is that we'll end up putting up a chain link fence. Seems like people were out there while we were putting up the closure, people walking through the closure, while we're out there today, people walking through the closure. So we're probably gonna put up a chain link fence. It's gonna end up having, once we determine those limits, we're gonna have to do some emergency repairs, put in some H piles to shore up those sheet pile sections, also gonna involve taking off the decking right there. The estimate, early estimates for those.
Is it me, or are we whispering?
Thank you.
The judge is doing it now, you're doing it. Can you talk up?
Yeah, I can talk, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry, back from the beginning.
No, no. You said you had 16 positions, oh, no. Go ahead, James.
The funding for the emergency repairs, our early estimates are between 1.5 and $2 million, and we already have that.
That's right.
That in our current budget, that's currently available, so that won't stop us from doing the emergency repairs.
That's just what the emergency part.
Correct. What that will do is will affect us moving forward. We have programmed in funding for approximately, I think, with 7 million total. We'll be able to do the holiday end section plus one other piece. With these emergency repairs, we'll scale back and just focus on likely that section right now will have these issues. Those H piles that we use for the emergency repairs will be able to be reused during the permanent fix. Like I said, right now, we're on two tracks, one, a track to determine the limit for the emergency repairs, but also we're accelerating the design process. Right now, we're at 60%. We're trying to line up, design to be complete by the time the budget was complete, so we could roll right into bin out and award network. Those emergency repairs are gonna have to happen quicker, so you'll see some aggressive activity out there to take care of this issue, with then us targeting the design on this area right here.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Two things, I was able to watch from up above in Admiral's Landing down below. The lights have been out right in front of Admiral's Landing for more than a week, so we, some folks called to complain about that because it was frankly dangerous, and we had folks who jumped the fence at the Admiral's Landing pool and enjoyed themselves swimming in the pool, which is also dangerous since there's nobody out there and it's pitch black dark at night. I also personally watched little kid, because, you know, we had so many folks downtown this past weekend for the Gospel Arts Festival and all the police officers here for the Unity Tour Ride, you know, kids running right through the seawall close thing, and as we're coming up on Harbor Fest and Memorial Day Weekend and all, we got a snow fence or something.
We'll be putting up a metal fence.
Really carefully, because people are going right through there, and they don't realize that it's closed because it's pitch dark. If it's 9 o'clock at night, they don't even realize it. So we gotta really shut it down if you need to shut it down.
Okay, anybody else? All right, thank you.
Thanks, James. Okay, at the conclusion of your work session last week, we had gotten the tax rate increase down to just a little over four cents. We had put back some things in that, and one of those major items was a 2% increase for general wage employees. And at the time, we estimated that was about 1.4 million. We've looked at it a little closer, it's only 1.2. So you've got about $200,000 of cushion, so to speak, from what we put back in a little less than a week ago. So I just give you that as a starting point. You may, you may want to apply that to an organizational efficiency study, which is gonna cost us something, which we don't have an amount programmed for. Or you may want to say, you know, that was a, since we were at about four and a third cents, that would be basically the round down to, right to four cents. If you just said, don't do anything, but we only put 1.2 back in for the general wage increase. But that's where we are today, and we stand ready to work through any additional items that you want to change to the budget as it stands today.
Okay, Ms. Sims?
I would like us to seriously consider eliminating the general wage increase and instead increasing some of the fire and police positions that are frozen, both in the sworn and uns sworn. As I'm learning now, we have quite a few positions in the fire department. We have 30-odd people eligible to retire this year in the fire department. We have eight individuals who were already hired by the police department, already had letters of hire, some had already signed leases to move here and start their jobs, and now they're being told, oh, no, we don't have that job. I know one of them was in forensics, which isn't sworn, but it certainly is important to solving cases. And I don't know how those numbers match up, I'm just looking for dollars.
If I could address that, Madam Vice Mayor, the, there were conditional offer letters that went to nine police candidates. Seven were sworn, two were the forensic technician positions. But as they were on the vacancy list, when we started this discussion and looking at ways to cut the budget, I directed the Chief Argus to just hold on those until we, either something changed or the budget was adopted. So there were conditional offers, but they weren't, they weren't, you know, there were conditional offers to continue on with the selection process, so they are on hold. And if we, if we put, if we put the, those sworn positions back in, I looked at the, each position with benefits is a little over $48,000. So if you put all seven of those back in, it would be, by my calculation, 338,000, or about half a cent. And then the two non-sworn are, the two of them together would be about $87,000, or about a 13th, or 1300ths of a cent, so.
Tell me what that totals to?
Well, you put the two together, it'd be a little over $400,000, or about, yeah, two-thirds of a cent. So if you put all seven of those back in, it would be, by my calculation, 338,000 or about half a cent. And then the two non-sworn are, the two of them together would be about $87,000 or about a 13th, or 13 hundreds of a cent, so.
Tell me what that totals to?
Well, you put the two together, it'd be a little over $400,000 or about, yeah, 2/3 of a cent.
But then that, but then what about the fire?
We didn't, you know, we didn't have any pending hires out of the 17 vacancies, so I didn't, I didn't compute what those were.
Is that what it is?
Those were a little different in that they weren't waiting.
It's 17 vacancies in fire?
Yes. 13 sworn and four non-sworn.
And I thought, based on our discussion at the last meeting, we were not freezing you to replace someone that went out. We keep confusing, making these things sound worse than what they are for political purposes. If 30 people were to leave, we could replace those 30, Elizabeth.
We can replace everyone.
And you knew full well, that's what we discussed.
Well, I thought-
Okay. Now, you're muddying the waters. And so we said we wanted to freeze the positions that had not been affected and were not filled. Is that not what we said?
Yeah, but she has a right to ask the question.
I'm not saying she doesn't have a right to ask the question. She does not have a right to confuse what the council said.
She didn't understand it, so she asked the manager.
Mr. Meeks.
And she got her answer.
Not confusing me.
If 30 people want to leave this year, then the fire department has the right to replace those.
All 30.
All 30.
But not the 17 that was on that.
That's right. That's where we put the freeze at. That's where the 1.6 million was.
I have a question.
Okay. And Mr. Moody?
The license fee increase last year, when we increased that, we kind of indicated that we would revisit that in the next budget. Well, we're at the next budget. So what would that, what would that cost to roll that back to where it was? Brandon?
I don't know. I'm going to look that up.
Even if we don't roll it all the way back, we should at least head south on it.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
I mean, I was one of the ones who pushed that increase and I never had any intentions of rolling it back or revisiting it because that was the money we used to pay for the raise. I paid for the raise we gave employees last year. So you take that money back, you're going to take part of the raise back?
I didn't say take it all back.
That's what, that's what that money was used for, so.
That's what it is, we need to-
I'm not interested in revisiting that. It's done.
Well, you're not, I am.
But it was to offset the-
I know what it was for.
And so you pulled that back, then you got recurrent expenses that you don't have income to cover and that's, again, what we-
You dig another hole.
You dig another hole. Right. Dr. Whitaker and then Mr. Meeks.
I still want the-
Dr. Whitaker and then Mr. Meeks.
Mr. Garfree, we're at the, according to the email you sent us, we're at 4.79. Are we still at that figure for the tax increase?
It's 4.3. I tried to reconcile using a different methodology, but this is the one that we worked from last week and so it is a 4.3 cent increase.
Okay, so-
I got it close using the other methodology, but-
4.33?
4.3 is a better number in terms of a cent.
I thought the, I thought what we'd be doing tonight, not revisiting things that we've already discussed, but are we going to be at 4.3 or are we going to take into account the fact that the school system has made some adjustments and also the fact that I don't think we had the Sports Hall of Fame included? And if we take that into account, where would we be? We would be below 4.3.
Yes, sir. If you're saying we did not include a cut to the Sports Hall of Fame, that's correct.
Right.
And we did not include any changes to the schools.
So, so based on, based on the discussions with the schools and some compromises that have been made, we're around about, what, 1.3?
1.35.
1.35, so.
How are you getting at 35?
350.
350 is the Sports Hall of Fame.
Can we get a census on that?
Million dollars on the school.
Oh, you're reducing by a million 350, I see what you're saying.
You're going to shut it before.
So that's, that's basically where we are tonight because Mr. Chair's budget and then what we took out and added in, it gets us to 4.3. And so we just have to determine, is it going to be a 4.3 increase or are we going to apply the school, the Sports Hall of Fame to bring it down to probably somewhere in the 2, 3 cents range? So what does that calculate to at 1.35?
A million 350 divided by 685,000.
It's almost 2 cents.
1.97 cents, so call it 2 cents, yes, sir.
All right. So, so that we want to settle for 2 or 3 cents tax increase. That's where we are.
Okay. Mr. Meeks?
Well, thank you for bringing up the school giving back the million dollars. Are we going to revisit what the sheriff's cut versus what y'all said you want to give his cut because you did say you would discuss that about the million dollars versus 800,000? And then I would like a census on the Hall of Fame, if you don't mind.
First issue with the sheriff, we still have a fundamental issue with not having those beds filled at the regional jail. This piece that the sheriff and the judge just talked about were 16 extra positions that they don't need at the courthouse. This has nothing to do with the sheriff complying with the regional jail component. And if we would have met, we could have talked through those things and part of the rationale why I didn't think we needed any of those is because if you remove the 40 people over to the regional jail and if the state has a 5 to 1 ratio, there's another eight people that he can use to be able to do other things, whether it's courthouse security, civil process. So to just maintain and hold inmates here and not take them over there, Dan, is, is a fundamental issue that I think most of us have here. So if he's not willing to do that, I'm not willing to budge on the million dollars because I think it frees up our deputies for him to do other things. And if we are looking at what's in the best interest of the city, it only makes sense. We're paying for those positions anyway. We're paying for those 250 positions. So I mean, I applaud him and the judge for coming back with the 16, but that still doesn't have anything to do with 40 people not being over in the regional jail and those 40 moving over and what that does to his workforce and allows him to do some other things. So if there were an additional eight people, then that's an additional eight people you could take off the other city positions. That's why I recommended to the council that we didn't need any of those funded city positions other than the maintenance person. So it's, it's more than just saying there's a per diem and doing that math. You're freeing up people over there that you wouldn't need, that you could use to do something else here in the city with. I mean, so those are legitimate things and to keep them there and not move them over, I think, still creates a heartburn. Is anybody else?
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
I want to get some clarity. We were talking about cutting the sheriff a million.
A million, correct.
Was that based on something else other than if we would, the 800,000, put it that way, and cutting back on 16 people? That doesn't negate, that doesn't negate the fact that we need to fill the beds up.
Right.
But it's about where we wanted to start, isn't it?
Yeah. But the million, right now, the city funded positions equate all in with salary and benefits to right at a million dollars. So my recommendation was to eliminate all of those 25 city funded positions, leave the one maintenance person. Those 25 was, there's at least 16 people over there that I don't need, but if you comply with the regional jail component and move those 40 inmates over, then you have more people over in the jail that he could use to, to do other things with. So why would we pay for additional folks when he's got eight or nine additional ones now at the jail if he moves them over to the regional jail? I mean, it's a manpower resource thing and so to make a clean presentation, it was a million dollars for all of the city funded positions, including benefits. And so 16 of them now gets you at about 850 from what he just said. I don't know if that-
Well, 16 won't get you 850.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
At 850, they're making, they're averaging $50,000 apiece.
Yeah.
And I'm looking at the page chart, there ain't, there ain't 18 people here making, 16 people here making $50,000.
Even if you include the benefits, this is just under 48.
Yeah, so you're probably looking more like 560, 500, 560 for the additions.
We've got to move those inmates over and he's got to use those extra people in the jail and you can't, I mean, that's a no-brainer.
The inmate piece was 400 and some thousand dollars, but, and then 440 something.
413.
And, right. And, you know, starting out at a million, I think when y'all, you know, when the four said, "We're going to cut it by a million," I think they should raise the question to make sure he, under, that y'all have a discussion. And, you know, that's just my, my personal opinion.
I understand.
It takes four votes to get anything passed and-
And that was our hope, that was our hope, that we, that we, that we, that they go and have a discussion and they come back with something, something that we, that we all can live with. My only contention was, as I said in the other meeting, was we have, we cannot pay for beds that are empty. So whatever that number was, was in my original proposal, the 413 for those, those 40 beds, what it was. It's in my original proposal, so.
So even if the 16 city funded positions equate to 500 or 600,000 instead of the 800, you're still looking at a $400,000 loss for not having the inmates. So if you add them two numbers together, you're still at a million dollars. So we haven't done anything as far as a budget standpoint. It's, it's a million dollars, it's just the logistics of moving the people over and then allowing the workforce to free up deputies to use in other capacities. It's still a million dollars.
So we would need, I'm sorry.
No, sir.
So we would need what is being suggested plus an additional-
No, sir. We just stay with the million. Under a million, that's suffice. If you look at the 400,000 that we're losing, based on Brandon's chart, for him not having the folks over in the regional jail and then whatever the equivalency of 16 of the city funded positions, and I'm like Councilman Chair, I don't think that's 850. I think all of that in, if 25 was, you can do a quick ratio and proportions, if 25 was a million, then 16 would be probably somewhere south of that number.
Well, he did say the highest ones and so I did a quick, based on the spreadsheet I just handed you, they probably, the highest 16 probably average with benefits about 45, 46,000 dollars apiece. So that times 16 is 720,000, so, but I, you know, somewhere between that and 800 is probably the right number because I'm just, I haven't actually plugged the numbers in.
The, one thing I want to say is, you know, we say partnership and work together and it's 200 grand delta between the two, but, you know, I go back and look at the things he offers the city and if he takes those inmates and you, just like I said the other day, you freeze his hiring, we're going to have a different problem. And I, we're basing, you know, we're making this decision over 200,000. I just want everybody to, you know, you said you want to have a discussion with them, y'all had the discussion. You didn't say the million dollars was closed, you said, "I want to discuss it." Y'all discussed it. I would like to see a census of 800,000 or a million tonight, if you, if you don't mind doing that census also, and also the Sports Hall of Fame, because I think with the judge and the sheriff coming in, saying their piece, and, you know, just like I know, you want a million, I want 800, you know, the four takes it and I recognize that, but I would like to get everybody's opinion on it.
Yes, sir.
I thought we were already there after the last meeting. That's why I said we already at 4.3. Now the issue is, are we going to stay there or add the school and the Sports Hall of Fame to it? And I thought that from our last meeting also, that there were some of you that had an issue with the schools anyway, so I don't think there needs to be any discussion on what the school is offering.
No.
Right. And so it's coming down to just the Sports Hall of Fame. You want to add that 350.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Moody?
I yield to a speech.
I mean, I just, just for consideration, the school money's coming back, you got the raises and we don't know what, you know, exactly what next year holds. So I think that the general public is pretty happy that now I can get a 17 cents tax increase.
Yeah.
That's an understatement.
We can agree on that.
Okay. So thinking about the future, we could take that, that million dollars from the schools and do a couple of things. We could either put it in fund balance, we could pay for the roof at, what is it, West Haven? And if we reduced it to further as-
I think the schools has got money for the roof.
Roof too, yeah.
Roof money's already coming, so the million is clear.
So we could put that in fund balance and have it-
Fund balance or bake it in and lower the rate.
Right, because we don't know what, what tomorrow holds. And I think any increase we get this year will bode well for building up some funds for what may come-
Outused.
-next year and years further. So I don't know if we want to go to zero, but like Dr. Whitaker said, we're at, we're at 4.3. So the question is now, do we stay at 4.3? Do you take the raises off the table as, as the vice mayor said and get the, get the three? All of those I think are plausible and we could do that because, you know, given, given employee a 2 cent raise and raising their taxes by 4.3 cents, they, if they live in Portwood, they haven't gained anything. You know, they're probably better served getting them a-
Lower tax rate.
A lower tax rate. Just food for thought. And I'm, and I'm not advocating for either, but I'm just, those are things we would consider as well.
And back to Mr. Meeks's point with the Hall of Fame, I think one of the issues there was, once we looked at the library closing and the costs associated with one closing the library and deferring some of the days being open, and there was almost a 250 or 300,000 dollar delta, I mean, there was a major concern raised that we're not going to allow the Hall of Fame to get a full 350,000 funding and then have our libraries suffer where there's more people being utilized, so.
If the choice is between the Hall of Fame and the library, I'm going library.
Well, I think that's where, we were all at. That's why we were saying that.
Brandon just gave us some money for the library, I think.
We need to keep the libraries open. I mean, that's what our kids use, I mean, so we need the libraries open.
The kids using and the public in general.
The general public as well, yeah.
Where are you computing that?
When, when-
The difference in the raises?
No.
When you gave us the, the new figure for the, the general wage employee raises, if we're going, if we do that, was about $200,000 less than what he originally gave us. So in my mind, that's library money. If you take the raise off altogether, you got, you got other things, but then that's the first thing I thought of, that was library money.
That's a good point. Let's, why don't we do this? Can we agree on a number we are good with as far as an increase? If we're not going to get it zero, is it 2 cents? Is it 3 cents? Is it 4 cents? And then maybe we can back into this number here and-
Could it be zero?
And it could be, if that's your number, we could, I mean, we're trying to get there, but again, I, I think you're going to need some new revenue coming in, Doc Dedmans, and, I mean, I wouldn't mind compromising to get a 2 or 3%, 2 or 3 cents tax increase, but I am not in favor of cutting some of these programs that we have and we've getting the masses of our citizens using to be able to fund anything, whether it's the Hall of Fame or anything like that that's not yielding those kind of returns. So to me, that's a no-brainer as well. So, okay.
I wouldn't be willing-
So, Doc Dedmans, you're at zero.
Well, I'd love it to be at zero, let me put it that way.
Okay.
I wouldn't be willing to take back the employee raises. I think the raises need to remain because as they move into future years, that develops a basis. But we're at 2.37 with the schools and the Sports Hall of Fame. And so I would, I would be willing to do, as Mr. Chair was saying, some, maybe some uncertainty, so 3 cents off of that 2 point, from 2.37, 3 cents.
3, I can do 3.
I still would like to get a census on the Hall of Fame because I think we're-
Okay, we'll get there. Where are you at?
I'll hold to either that.
You don't have a number?
I don't have a number.
Okay. Meeks don't want to play. Okay.
I'd go to 4.
You can go 4, Elizabeth. All right, Mr. Moody?
Zero.
Mr. Moody wants zero?
3.
3. All right, and I'm at 3. All right, so it's 1, 2, 3 of us at 3, 2 at 0 and 1 doesn't want to play. So let's, let's shoot for 3%, 3 cents increase. And so a 3 cents increase, Brandon, gives us what kind of latitude to be able to carry the rest of the discussion on. So if we started out at, what, 4.2?
4.33.
4.3 and to take a penny, penny and a half off, we're talking a million-
Your school money.
Yeah. You're talking the school money gets you a piece of it and- And then if you go right now to library piece, to reinstate it fully open, I think it was 250?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if you take the library piece and put 250 there, and the Hall of Fame was, what, 350? So there's $100,000 we could...
You would cut 3.50 for the Hall of Fame.
Or we take 250 from the Hall of Fame and give it to the library to be open, and then give the Hall of Fame 100. I mean, that's the delta between the difference in the library and the Hall of Fame, correct?
Yes, sir.
But you got an extra 200 off of here.
That's right.
Hold on, you don't wanna play?
Yeah, but I still have a question.
Okay, so, okay, go ahead, Danny.
All right. Brandon, what if we gave the employees a bonus versus a raise? How would that help as far as, I mean, could we use that out of fund balance? Because, you know, a raise would be reoccurring debt, correct?
Yes. I haven't calculated an equivalent bonus, but there are a number of options you could do with that in terms of timing and the amount. I wouldn't recommend taking it out of fund balance. I'd recommend funding it with ongoing revenues, even though it's not recurring.
Right, what other revenues versus adding it to a tax rate this year? I'm just asking a question.
I'd have to figure out what...
There's one point... 2 million is a penny in a piece versus if we do bonuses, that doesn't reflect it, correct?
That's correct. But, you know, I don't know how much you're talking about for a bonus and when you wanna implement it. All those things affect what the real cost is to the general fund.
Because, I mean, it goes back to, if we give them a bonus, the taxpayers aren't paying the increase on the tax rate of 1.2 versus a raise, the taxpayer will pay that of a bonus. We could handle it a little differently, correct?
Yes, I think what you're getting at, it would, you know, if you did the equivalent of a 2 percent bonus, it would not cost a million 2 for the general fund, it'd be something less than that.
Right.
I don't know what it is, though. Because, you know, like I said, it depends on where you wanna do it July 1.
I'm just giving us an option versus raising taxes to give a raise just for this year. Because we can all kick the can to our neighbor down the street next year, you know, it's a whole different year.
Okay, you're done? All right, so right now, we're at, if we go with the 3 percent...
3 cents.
3 cents, I'm sorry. We include the million from the schools. We put the libraries back whole, give the Sports Hall of Fame $100,000, and then we've gained 200,000 with the delta from the 2 percent increase from 1.4 to 1.2. So we essentially have 1.2 million in new money that'll get us to 3 cents?
I think we're at 3 cents, but I'm not keeping a running tab. I'm hoping my finance person is.
I think so.
Yes, sir. Yeah, philosophically, I think funding private entities, I'm just not in favor of that when we're doing it over and against some of our public entities. If that's what council decides, that 100, only, I would be in favor of that if that's a phase out that as we move into next year, that funding would be eliminated.
Okay, I think we can do that. I mean, we've been talking about phasing them and...
For 5 years.
With the last 5 years, we've been talking about that. And we've actually gone from a half a million down to 3.50. So doing the 100 this year and letting them know the candy stores close next year, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
What about the bonus versus the raise?
Are we at 3?
In the Sports Hall of Fame to 250,000.
That's what I thought, yeah.
No, to 150, to 100.
I'm sorry, to 100,000, I'm sorry, you're right.
100,000 for the Hall of Fame.
And taking 250,000 of that for the library funding.
If you're trying to get to 0.
And we're taking the state revenue for the schools and reducing...
And baking that in.
Right.
I think the...
Yes, sir.
I think the bonus, I think, given the economic times, that giving more stability to our employees, knowing that the increase that they're gonna receive this year is gonna be there the following year, I think that relieves stress and it shows a better commitment to our employees than just giving it as a bonus. I think it needs to be a sustained income. Also, remind council again, our city is dealing with some high poverty issues. And research is showing that one of the major impacts on children is stress in their education. And I think when we start putting in more stable income, regardless of what level, whether it's individuals or those that are supporting them, that if we can relieve those type of stress, it also shows up on the educational side. So I just wanna remind that although we may not be giving it directly to individuals that may be in that situation, they assist people in those situations. And so I would be more in favor of a more stable income line than a bonus.
Well, the other side of that coin is, when you get a bonus, it has more impact than a little bit each payday. I know it's not reoccurring, but that can be addressed next year. I agree with Councilman Meeks. It might be more efficient this year to look at a bonus like we have in past years. I know if you get a sum of money at one time, you can do something with it. You know, the federal government, state government, you're gonna eat up a 2 percent increase. You wouldn't have enough to do anything with it to speak of. But a bonus could be meaningful, could buy something.
The, if you give a bonus, that money does not go into, there's no retirement in a bonus.
That's correct, it does not factor into...
Right.
It does, it's still called tax rate, I'm saying.
Yeah, so the salary increase not only has a present but a future impact with the retirement piece.
Okay, all right, any other discussion here? Because I wanna get a feel from us on this 3 cents going with what we just discussed with making the libraries whole, Sports Hall of Fame, get $100,000, and we stay with the 2 percent increase.
We're at 3 cents.
We're at 3 cents. We're at 3 cents.
We're at 3 cents if we do that, okay? Yes, sir?
Can we get a census on...
I'm gonna go around the table, Mr. Mayor.
Well, you're the mayor.
Dr. Edmonds, would you be in agreement with that?
Reluctantly, yes.
You're still at 0. At least you're playing, Danny doesn't wanna play, but you...
Set up any...
Reluctant, okay.
This is the 3 cents.
This is the 3 cents, staying with the 2 percent increase to the general wage employees.
Yeah, to come from 17 cents down to 3, and giving our employees a raise and funding the schools, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, Mr. Meeks?
I don't play.
You don't play, okay. Elizabeth?
I think we've done yeoman duty, but I don't wanna vote for a tax increase to give a raise.
Okay, all right, Mr. Moody?
Same here. The other thing is, last week, we spoke about the fact that the Sports Hall of Fame may become a state agency. I know there's talk in the General Assembly among our delegation to make that happen. That's a pretty drastic cut. It is a tourist attraction, it is Virginia's Sports Hall of Fame. I'm not certain how that's gonna impact them. I know eliminating it total, they were gonna look at closing the doors. I don't wanna see that building with the doors closed. And they are a private entity, that's something we all know. Being as such, they can close the doors if...
So you wanna increase taxes, or what do you wanna do to get them, make them? I mean, what do you wanna do to get them money?
I'm just stating the obvious, same thing you were told.
The bonus.
Okay, so you're no with the 3 cents?
Man, it's 2 cents off tax.
You're no?
I'm good.
You're good, okay, and I'm good. So 4 of us are good with a 3 cents tax increase and 2 percent increase to the general wage employees.
You'll be at 1.
And we'll be at, you'll be at what? No, she said we're at 3.
I said you'll be at 1 if you did a bonus.
And...
I'm assuming you're allowing all the 1.2 million, it's gonna cost something to do a bonus, whatever you decide that is.
Do a bonus.
If that's the direction you go, well, it looks like you're going in that direction.
Okay, so we got a majority wanna go with the 3 cents increase and the 2 percent increase for the general wage employees. So are we done?
Well, yes, sir. We'll have to modify your ordinances that are on your agenda for tomorrow night because obviously we prepared those based on where we were a week ago. But we'll have those modified yesterday.
Excuse me? Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to clarify what you're going for with the West Haven roof because we've talked cash, we've talked bond funding. Are we thinking the schools going to be paying?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I just told you.
It was unanimous, I believe.
So we'll take that...
And take care of the roof.
We're gonna take the West Haven roof project, and the schools are gonna fund that.
I agree.
Okay, that's what I just...
Yes, ma'am.
Because we have it as bond, okay.
Didn't they pass a resolution to that, I think?
Yeah, they did.
They did, didn't they?
Okay, all minds clear here? All right, I wanna thank everybody for the deliberation in this. We, you're right, we did come from a great feat, and it's not pretty, but we got it done. So again, thank y'all. And I think we've got a motion to go in the closed session.
I'm moving to go into closed meeting pursuant to the thing you're closing session to that 2.2-3711 to discuss the performance of specific public officials, council appointees, and boards and commission members as permitted under subsection A, point...
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Ed, Dr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Semus?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
We are in close, thank you.